Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Women Are Worthy Show. Okay. You guys asked for it, okay? I've been getting so many emails and requests. When are you going to have Ms. Sharice Davis on the show? She's at the 6th District. She's in Post 6. When are you going to have her on the show? She works with, you know, the Board of Education. When are you going to have her on the show? When are you going to have her on the show? When are you going to have her on the show? When are you going to have her on the show? I need some water because you guys keep asking that. So, without further ado, guys, I'm so freaking excited. I feel like I'm sitting next to, um, who should I say? It's a celebrity. Jennifer Lopez.
Yeah.
Look. Look. Stop. Look. Don't mess up my dream, okay? Because I have a New Yorker. Okay? You guys know how I am when I have my New Yorkers here. Even though she spent a bit of her life in New York, okay? But still, without further ado. Guys, you know how I feel when I have someone on this show that you guys have requested. It's not that I wasn't trying, okay? It's not that I wasn't trying.
That's right.
So, without further ado, I want to welcome Ms. Sharice Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you for being on our show.
Right.
Isn't she gorgeous? Yes!
So nice. I would come back every day.
Okay. So, I want you to, you know, for those who don't know, just, you know, not five or whatever, they just don't know. Can you explain and tell us, who is Ms. Sharice Davis?
All right. Well, I'm a mom, so I have two boys. I'm 13 and 10. So, they keep me busy, you know? Boys are... I grew up in a house full of girls, so I'm the oldest of three girls. Um, it's definitely different just having boys and some of the things that they say and do. I don't understand, but that's fine. They're fun.
Right.
Um, and I was a teacher for a really long time. I taught kindergarten. It was the one grade I said I didn't want to teach. And then, right before school started, the principal had an opening in kindergarten. And that's where I stayed eight years.
Okay.
So, I must have loved it, so...
That's why you get...
Yeah.
Do we need to talk a lot because of the sound, the background?
Yeah.
Okay. So, because of that, and you have boys.
Yes.
Now, where do you live? Because she's in Cobb County! Where in Cobb County do you live?
So, I'm in the Smyrna-Vinings area. So, not quite City of Smyrna, and, you know, not quite Vinings, the town of Vinings either. So, we're right there, um, unincorporated Cobb County. And so, my kids are at Teasley and Campbell Middle School.
Campbell Middle School! So, now, I'm really happy to have you on the show because you're in Post 6.
Yes.
I want to know, for those out here that are thinking, and even my interns who are watching, what made you want to run for the Board of Education?
So, someone asked me about running, and I thought, no way. I'm a mom. I'm teaching. I'm just kind of thinking about what to do next after teaching. And I had never thought about political office, ever. And I took a look at the board, like, literally went to the website and realized, you know, it was not that diverse of a group. And there was one woman on the board at the time. We would later find out she was not running again. And so, I certainly felt this duty to at least run a campaign and try to add my voice to the board. Certainly, you know, it's not easy work, but I knew I had the support of this group to coach me through campaigning and all of that, and here we are.
Wait, wait, wait. She's glossing over things like, "Yeah, I just ran and I won." Let's rewind here. So, your first attempt, and you won?
I did.
Wow!
You know, when I meet with kids, when we have, you know, just talks with elementary school students, and I always tell them, I first ran for office when I was in high school. It was to be student body president. And my AP teacher, my AP history teacher said, "Sharice, I think you have the leadership skills to do this. You should run." And I, again, had never thought about it. And I love that he believed in me enough to do it. And I was running against the cheerleading captain and did not win that race. And so, I do tell kids, you know, I have them guess about whether or not I won that student body president. Um, and, you know, they're like, "You won?" I'm like, "No, I didn't," you know? But here we were again with someone else saying, "Hey, you know, you should think about this. You know, we think that you could do this, you know? Do the work and, you know, get the message out there to voters." And it clicked, and I'm grateful for that and happy that I'm there, for sure.
What made you, you know, because so often we want to do something, but we don't execute it. We don't try. We just, "Oh, I want to do this. I want to do this." What was the turning point that made you decide to sit down with your family? Because it's a family decision.
Yes, absolutely.
To say, "I want to run, and I think I can do this."
So, someone actually came to my dining room table, and the whole, those conversations at the kitchen table, I mean, you know, that's head and stuff, right? So, someone came, and it was no longer on the phone or through email. They were now sitting with me at my house saying, "Let's do this. You can do this." And so, my husband's there, and we're having a conversation, and he just said, "If not now, when?" You know? So, this is in a time when there's just a lot of confusion about what our country's going to look like and how our kids are doing and thinking about how different a lot of ways this is for kids now than when we were kids. And so, if not now, when? Like, what was I waiting for if I was even thinking about doing it? And I said, "Yeah. No, there's no other time. Let's go." And so, I definitely had those conversations with family, because you need their support.
Which is true, because you have to have your village to be a part of it.
Absolutely, yes.
Who inspired you? We're now in Black History Month.
Yeah.
Who was your inspiration?
Well, I have to say, I was running at the same time as Stacey Abrams was running.
Really?
Yep. So, we were on the ballot together.
That's right.
And, um, I mean, even now, I've had the chance, since we, you know, had the election, to thank her. Because she was very much about, "It's not just me here, because I can't do my work alone, right? So, I am going to do everything I can to help get other people elected." And so, her volunteers, which she had many.
Right. They just really have a, like, you know...
Army volunteers. Her volunteers would go out. My literature, and they were very supportive, and I really do credit her campaign for helping me win. And it brought people out, more excited, and then they stayed, you know, they stayed in the ballot box, and they kept voting, and, you know, they, when we're done, chose my name. So, yeah, very good.
Wow! So, that she was your inspiration. So, if there's anything you could tell someone out there that is thinking about running, they're not sure if they should run, what advice would you give them? Because I look up to you, okay? Because to see... No, no, I'm serious. Because I don't give, it's not even giving compliments. I like to give women their due. The fact that you're working, the fact that you're married, the fact that you have another job, the fact that you're trying to make our school board better, because as if, as everyone on the board is trying to do. So, what made, what advice would you give someone out there?
Do it. What's funny is I, I was going back and forth. Before I said I would, I was trying to find all the reasons to not do it, to say, "You know what? Just kidding. I'm not going to do it." And I was reading this blog post of this woman who was, I believe she lived in Iowa, and she had run for office, and she had a hard time. There was a lot of misogyny and all of that. And she actually lost her race, but at the end of her blog post, she said, "If you're a woman and you are thinking about running for office, do it. Stop thinking and just do it." I didn't even win my race, and I'm going to tell you to do it. That it's that important that you just do it. And so, that's the advice.
It's like the whole Nike slogan, just do it.
Yeah, absolutely. Just do it. You know, we will second-guess ourselves and talk ourselves out of things all the time, literally as women. And we really do need to stop doing that, because things look the way they do in terms of leadership, because we're always saying, "Oh, but I can't. Now's not a good time." It will never be a perfect time.
Right. That's true.
And, you know, society needs you.
And, you know, I remember I asked a lot of questions, because I got some questions that, you know, was asked of me, decided to put it out there. What change are you bringing to the school board? Because, you know, you're young, so what change would you like to see or you're bringing to your teachers?
I mean, one of the main points that I had campaigning, and certainly now, is just making sure that we're meeting with all of our students. Because, you know, there are students who certainly can get lost in the whole shuffle, and they need more, and they just, they need more support, and maybe their parents aren't able to be as vocal, and all these things that are at play. And I feel like that's something that we can always be working on, is the equity in the district and making sure that we are helping all children. And so, I think for me, having been a teacher and recently knowing the challenges that are in our education system, you know, I was in teaching for 15 years and just left a couple of years ago. And I, I think I'll go back.
Right.
I'm saying that in this video here, so... I'm a school certified grader, and I actually, I'd love to go back. But yeah, it brings a different perspective. I have kids in the schools right now. Um, and I've taught in lots of different schools too. I mean, I've taught, um, Buckhead, and I've taught in Title I schools where most, you know, all of our kids aren't free or reduced lunch. So, I have this very diverse experience as well. And so, I'm sitting there taking in information from our executive cabinet or looking at decisions, not thinking about all children from all walks of life. And that, that takes work, you know? And it's not easy. It's not easy work, but...
For the kids, you know, I have young students here that are on set. What advice would you give them? Because sometimes the kids are feeling hopeless when it comes to their schools, their teachers, and the commitment. What advice would you give them? Because I hear it from, not just, you know, I have so many students and interns with me, and sometimes I feel powerless, and I want to be able to inspire, be powerful to them, you know? So, they have a voice.
We all have a voice, but our young people for sure have a voice. Something I just posted on my Facebook page was the idea that all the great movements were led by young people. And so, we just had the anniversary of the Greensboro sit-in, and, you know, these were college students, and now some of our biggest movements, I mean, these are high schoolers.
Yes.
You know, and they're at the forefront. And so, you have a voice, and you are not alone. And so, I would say, find your people. Find the people that believe in those same things. Take it, find, get a method together for getting that to the adults who are in charge and who make the decisions. Because of course, you have to, you know, you have to get that information to them. You need them to change certain things. So, whether or not that's showing up to school board meetings, we love when kids come to school board meetings. I mean, that is just amazing, because you don't see it a lot. Speaking, a public comment, um, letter writing, going through the school councils. Every school has a school council in Cobb County. In other counties, it's a different name, but that's essentially what they are, local governance councils. Um, and those yield some power in that they can help make decisions for the school. And so, young people should feel like, through that, through their student government, that they can make change happen, if else.
So, what should we do? Someone out there who's watching you, who lives in your post, your district, and they're like, "You know what? I like this lady." What can we do to support you?
Yeah. Um, well, I have a newsletter. I'm doing a monthly newsletter, and I really do try to explain certain things that are going on in the district. I think for a long time, we didn't know what was going on as parents, and it always feels like things are being hidden from you, because you don't understand. But, um, I also, I will have town halls. I have coffee meetups, and I'll just randomly show up in East Cobb and Smyrna-Vinings, so a coffee shop, and welcome anyone to come and talk to me. I'm just trying to be accessible and talk about things, so I invite people to attend any of those events that I might be having, send an email, call me, any of those things.
Could we have your email and how they contact you?
Yes.
Because what I'm hearing is, from you, you talking, I'm hearing it's an open door policy.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to hear.
Yes. And so, you're not, I'm not going to be, you know, at the office. We don't have an office, you know? It's not, but for me, the open door policy, yes, it's going out in the community, you know? Let's meet up for coffee on a Saturday or a town hall at a school, you know, in the evening. And so, having these different events, and hopefully, you know, it's the timings, works for, works for everybody that has to be there. But, um, my email is c-davis board member at cobbk12.org. And all of this is on the website as well. Um, I think my cell phone's also on there, which are welcome to use. Um, I have a website, davisforcobb.com, davisf o r cobb.com. And you can sign up for the newsletter there. And also, even if you're not a Facebook person, which you probably are, because you're watching Miss Shaw's show, um, but it, you know, we'll share the feed from Facebook. And I do update Facebook, um, you know, often enough, but just try to find whatever way I can to communicate with people in the community. So, yeah.
So, let's get down to it. She's up for election.
Uh, I have, I have some time. We have some other seats that are up for reelection. So, I will be back up for reelection in 2022.
Right.
And we currently have four seats up in 2020.
Okay, so four, okay, we have four seats.
Yes.
So, what can we do? So, we're going to go on the website, want people to know more about you. We want you to share the page. If you know someone in her post district, please make sure that they watch the show, they call her, they get involved. Because I think it's so, so often, things are different, because I don't see the participation as much. I'm not saying everyone, but I know when I was growing up, there was more participation with the family, and, you know, things are like, social media, everything's fast, fast, fast. So, you know?
People are busy, and so that's why I just say, "Find your things." So, maybe you can't show up to school board meetings, but certainly, you know, maybe you can make one of these coffee meetups, or you can just send me an email. Um, and the thing is, I do want people to understand, as a school board, our one employee is a superintendent. So, everybody else feeds through the superintendent, but that is our one employee. And so, ultimately, we're not going to be in your kids' school, like, telling something to the teacher. That would be inappropriate, right? So, what we're going to do is connect you with the people at the district that can help you, you know, answer questions or resolve any concerns that you might have. That is really what we're charged for doing. And so, I know I'm happy to do that, and I think, you know, people just want, they want help, you know? By the time they're emailing me, it's probably, it hasn't been a good thing. Um, so yeah, I'm happy to help.
What is your favorite hobby? What do you like to do? I want to know more about your favorite hobby.
I mean, I, you know, I'm a librarian now, so I have to say, reading.
That's why!
Probably not reading, it's traveling.
Oh, my gosh!
Yeah, I do, I do read, you know? I don't read as quickly as I wish I did, but I read a lot of nonfiction.
Right.
Um, and I watch horror movies, like, I am, I am...
What's your favorite horror movie?
Oh, my gosh. Um, I would say, it's all the Stephen King stuff, so I would say...
Christine.
But it's like the originals of all that stuff, you know?
Yes, yes, yes.
But yeah, I love all that stuff. I could watch Friday the 13th like 10 times. Um, but yeah, with new stuff, like Jordan Peele's, like Get Out.
And Us and all of that. See, that's why you said that, because for me, as much as I'm out there, I'm also, I'm an introvert in nature, so people can't believe that. My favorite place on earth is the library, because no one can talk to you. So, whenever I'm missing, my husband knows, "Okay, let's go to the regional library." Because I'm an out, you know, out, where, "Let me go if Miss Jackie's in there." Or, "Let me go to Sewell Mill Library, because she's in there." I just don't, I want silence, because I do a lot of talking. So, I like silence, and I, I don't like, don't, come on, guys. Don't judge me. Don't judge me. I like the, I don't like the electronic books, like eBooks and stuff. I like the smell of the books.
I'm the same.
I don't know what's the problem with this shit.
You should be a librarian.
You know, and I'm like, yeah. I just, I just love it for me. So, that's why it's important that we have rebuilt and created new libraries that have media arts and things like that, so kids can enjoy, you know, what I enjoyed growing up, you know? Because I know we have all these eBooks and stuff and Kindle. I hate it. I keep, I hate it.
It's different.
Yes! Because I want to be able to highlight. I want to be able to dog ear the page if I want to. Okay, so now, what's your favorite place that you vacationed?
Uh, my memories of being in Puerto Rico with my grandparents is just, I mean, that's just such a highlight of my life, you know? And we would spend the entire summer. So, for us, it was three months. So, I, when I was growing up in New York, um, you know, we would be there the entire summer. My parents worked, and they needed us to just be somewhere, be safe and cared for, um, and have a good time. And so, we would literally spend the entire summer with my grandparents out there, and it was just always awesome. You know, your grandparents spoil you.
Yes! Eating some good food.
Exactly.
Go to the beach!
Yes.
Yes!
And so, I can't wait to take, actually, I'm not taking my boys there yet. Um, so, yeah. And we, I love, you know, going to the city, visiting New York City, and just wherever we can go and tour around, and just, you know, different way of life.
Have you taken them to New York?
I have, and we're actually going to be going soon, yeah.
Okay.
With both boys. I've been before with the oldest and, uh...
You're gonna, you're gonna take the trains with them?
Oh, yeah. We definitely, it's, it's all about public transportation. It's funny, because we don't, you know, we may not be on MARTA like that.
Yeah.
Sometimes, you know, we will ride on MARTA, but when we go somewhere, it's always public transportation.
See, when I go, when I travel, I like to go through with the natives too.
Yeah.
Because I want to be in that whole immerse ourselves in the culture.
Yeah. Everybody rides the subway, right? CEO and, like, you know, restaurant worker, everybody, so...
My goodness! So, let's say, um, you were granted a wish. You were granted a wish, and someone said, "You have two things that you can accomplish when it comes to the Board of Education." Two things.
Yeah.
What two things and why?
Well, I'm like amazed that I can actually tell you that one of those things has already started to happen, which is incredible. I mean, I, I really do thank the district for listening. Um, and not just to me. We've had parents and communities who, you know, local school councils, again, there was that, and PTAs, who have been asking for this. And so, I kind of came in and was able to just continue that conversation, and so I'm so proud that we're going to actually have more Georgia pre-K programs in Cobb County.
Really?
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait. Repeat that again.
Yes, we're going to have Georgia pre-K in Cobb County, which we had one program, um, but of course, then we used so much greater than that. So, what we're going to be doing is taking elementary schools that are no longer actually being used as schools, um, and then using them as like pre-K centers. So, we'll have some of our special needs pre-K classes there, and then also these Georgia pre-K programs, which of course were in the grand bargain of having the lottery in Georgia. So, very excited. They actually just announced that at our last school board meeting, and certainly happy that we could be able to provide that for families. So, um, that'll be in two schools. One is Old Brown Elementary and Hartley Little, New Orleans School, yeah. So, and that'll be coming up actually the next school year, but Hartley Little and Brown will start another year. But yeah, so we're, we're moving in the right direction. Um, as far as the second one, I think this is why for me, you know, the national politics come into play about just what, who would want to be in the country, right? Because I know that parents are stressed, and they don't have what they need to take care of themselves, or their medical needs, uh, food for their families. Um, so if parents could just, you know, they could be able to take care of themselves and their families, um, you know, just the financial part of it, which is a wish trust for a lot of families. And then our kids show up with that stress, right?
Yes, I'm seeing that with my interns, yes.
And we have kids who only eat when they're at school, because, you know, they qualify for free or reduced. They have breakfast, they have lunch, and then, while I was in school, you know? Of course, we're not in school on the weekends. But just thinking about what we're asking kids to be able to do when they are hungry, or Mom and Dad are really going through it at home. So, I just, I do wish, by Adam's magic line, that everybody just had what they needed to be able to take care of themselves and their families. And I think we would see it in our schools and our task force, whatever else you might think is important, but, you know, as a country, you have some work to do, for sure.
And I agree with you on that. And one of the things that I like, because I started Women Are Worthy, because I want women to understand, because I've been hearing a lot of my students, you're talking about celebrities, and I'm like, "Wait a minute. We have these people running around in our communities with no one shining a light." So, this is a way for us to have a platform, to have women, men, police officers, school members, positive people who are doing great things that no one, I'm not going to say that no one really knows, but more people need to know what they're doing. So, with that said, how important is it to you that women support each other and why?
Oh, my goodness. So, I actually, once I went to college, I was spelling it. I mean, that, I call them my formative years, you know? And I really, like, had my identity formed during the group of college, and, you know, it's all with it, all this time around you, and, um, to me, that's just the way it is. And I'm always saddened when I hear women say that they don't have that, um, because I would not be who I am. I would not be here, um, doing this, doing this show if it hadn't been for, you know, the other women that both, you know, inspired me and pushed me and all of that. So, it is, it is crucial. You've got to find your people, and sometimes your people aren't who you thought they would be.
Oh, man! Preach it! That's so true!
So, you know, it's not necessarily like it's an easy thing.
Right.
But you have to be working on that, and it's not a number. And I, some of my best friends are still people who I knew when I was in middle school. And here we are, we had a 30-year, 30-year friendship.
She's in...
30-year friendship. And, you know, just to think about that, and I know, like, my husband's like, "I don't have friends that I've known that long." It's just like, you have to do that, right? Like, we have to get together. Because it's once a year, you know? It's, we just pick up where we left off and how that just kind of fills your soul. So, all of that, it's all real. Sometimes you gotta look forward, you know? And you're never too old to establish your own relationships either.
So, what do you do? Because I'm all about self-care, because so often, as a woman, you're taking care of the family, taking care of the animals, taking care of the interns. Taking care of interns.
Teenagers.
You know, you're just, because you, you know, because we're nurturers, we're doing so much, and I was raised to be able to take care of yourself. But I meet so many women that feel guilty, because they're helping everyone else, but But I meet so many women that feel guilty because they're helping everyone else, but they feel guilty when it comes time for them. How are you practicing or if you are practicing self-care?
Um, I, one thing that I do, and I believe it's in my mind that I need to be thinking about this. But I do feel like I am, when I say, okay, tuning out, I'm gonna watch my show, read these couple of chapters, like that is it. You know, and I've learned, like I think I mentioned to you, like I don't have Facebook on my phone anymore. Because for me, all those days, all the notifications and like, you know, you see something and you're like, what did they say?
Yes.
I had to, had to stop with that because I can take over, right? And so for me, that was one thing that I did that has actually been life-changing. So I'm not, I'm getting off Facebook, you know? I, I learned stuff through Facebook and I.
You're not a balance thing?
Balance, yes. But for me, that was one thing I could do that I think helped a lot. But when I say I'm just, um, a nap, it's rare, but you know, it's just not feel guilty about that. And like, this is my time and this is what I'm gonna do and this moment. And then I can think back like, you know, I had that hour where I did what I wanted to do. And so, you know, you think about that and you think about the balance, you don't feel guilty and you also just know.
Okay.
Working on this. Just, yeah, it drives me a little.
And it's refreshing. And for those of you that's tuning in, we have Ms. Sharice Davis. She is in District Post Six. And, um, what high school is that?
It's Walton and Wheeler.
Okay. So she's with the Board of Education. And when I say this woman is phenomenal, she is phenomenal. She came in and, you know, what I like about you, cause there wasn't a lot of luck, is? And you're very, um, I would say very, I don't know, you're so quiet.
Yeah, yeah.
She was holding her breath. I don't know what she thought I was gonna say. Beep off! I don't know what she thought I was gonna say.
Yeah, that's right.
And what I like about you is, you know, you get things done. And you're just, you, the love that you have for people, for our community, not just that district, but Cobb County in period. And I like that about you because I, I see I've been doing my research on you. But I like the fact that, and that you love children. It's all about the kids because they are our future. No pun intended with the song, but they are our future. So where do you see yourself in five years?
Oh, five years? Um, I will still be on the school board. I, now this is something because I think I will know when to step aside.
Okay.
And let someone else come in. I think a good school board member knows that.
Right.
Okay. Um, you know, you don't wanna hoard power.
Right.
Um, but, you know, I realize two, four years is nothing in terms of, you know, making an impact. And you're still learning, of course, still learning, always learning, still learning the job. Um, and I, I hope to be able to report back that we've been able to do, like all these great things. And this is how it's impacted the kids in this county. Um, but I also help to kind of raise up the next group that's gonna run for office, you know? Yeah, I mean, it's just so important. And I think I've given people some, um, just, you know, hope that they didn't think they had. Because, you know, we in the state and, you know, in Cobb County, you thought, oh, these, these are the people who are in positions of power. Cause that's, that's, that's who can win, you know? And when people actually put themselves out there, it's like, oh, wait a minute, you know? Look, they, they won, they almost won, you know? And it's just like, there should be choices for voters. And so, um, I think that's gonna be a big role of mine is helping kind of get the next group ready to run for office.
Yeah, for me, you've changed the mind, changed the mindset because I've had some of my college students, uh, do some research regarding you. And I had one of my interns, she called me and she says, oh my God, because she's not in Cobb County. And she's like, oh my God, she goes to Clayton. And she's like, oh my God, Miss Jackie. And I said, yeah, you too can do it, you know, you too. So I don't wanna thank you for that. I really do. Because when she called me and she's like, Miss Jackie, she was just so excited. Oh my goodness, oh my goodness. She's like, I said, yeah, this is, we have a lot of firsts in Cobb County. And a lot of people outside of Cobb County, especially the younger generation, they're not aware of that. So they don't know that they can do it because you, as you said, you have to put yourself out there. And that's what we want them to do, put themselves out there.
I do wanna tell you a story because it's just, I'll remember this.
Sure.
Until I'm ninety six or years old. But, uh, I was at, uh, an elementary school. And in fourth grade, they learned about local government and they learned about the race in November of twenty eighteen. And so I was there volunteering at some point in the, um, maybe just last spring. And this girl comes up to me and she's like, are you Sharice Davis? And I was like, yeah, Sharice, you know? She's like calling her friends, she's Davis over here. And I'm like, what is this? I thought, you know, I was like, someone's like hugging me, you know, or being funny, right? And they all came around, they wanted to take selfies. And they were like, your hair looks like my hair. I love your hair. And, you know, we learned about you. And it was just incredible. I felt like a political Beyonce. For, I did it. It was so much fun. I will never forget that moment. They were so excited to see.
In a way.
Absolutely. And I thought to myself, like, that has probably never happened where here they were learning about somebody in their classroom. And then here is this person sitting before them. And they're making connections about how we look alike. And, um, I mean, it was just incredible. And every time I'm around kids like that, I just think, and they know who I am. And people, the kids are funny because they always say, they don't say Miss Davis, you know, they say, I love Sharice Davis. You know, it's one thing. Um, I always think like, I hope they, my prophecy.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
See, what I like about that, it's true, because you're inspiring to them and they're seeing someone like them, you know? It's cause it's almost like you wanna see someone like. It does. It does make a difference because it's like just seeing these phenomenal people who are winning in office or being appointed. It's just phenomenal. And I wanna take a few moments and I gotta thank my girl, Carmelina Gons. Okay? Cause when I say that, when I first met her, she just kept talking about you, talking about you. I thought, who is this? Like, she is phenomenal. She's out there in South Fulton doing phenomenal things. So I wanna really thank her because she's the person that really put me on to you. And then, you know, I posted something about you and then all of a sudden everyone's like, oh my God, get her on the show, get her on the show, get her on the show. So, um, it's just, it's great having a woman like you, um, to be sitting next to you. Because I think the world is your oyster. I see a bright future for you because you have that light. There's something, we can turn off all these lights.
I think it is the light.
We can turn off all these lights. I see you, it's like you're shining. And it's not your physical, no disrespect, it's not your physical, it's inside that's coming out. And I really enjoy you. So what, what would you like the viewers to know? Or what would you like to tell them? Because again, this is not my show. I'm just here. It's all about you. What would you like to tell them?
Just, we're all in this together. I mean, it's, you know, cordy, as it sounds, we are. And we just have to figure out our place in it and what we can do. I tell everybody, we all gotta do something, you know? It's not enough to just complain about things or, you know, just be with our family and our, our, you know, in our little neighborhood. There's always something that we can do to make things better. And it will make things better for a lot of other people. Yes. And so find your thing, you know, and, um, doesn't have to be running for office. But I do tell people, you know, if you're not going to run for office, then certainly you can be supporting someone else that is. And candidates do need your support. And whatever your ideology is, political leading, just get involved.
So support would be volunteering for their campaign, money, money, dinero, cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. You know, connections, connecting them with people who could possibly help them. Because at the end of the day, that's what we really need to focus on. You know, and for me, just, just sitting next to you, again, you just don't understand. Look, I just put my lashes on by myself, okay? By myself, got a makeup artist. You're not gonna sit here and I'm not gonna talk about you and it's gonna make me cry and my lashes gonna be in my hand. So I'm gonna keep this professional, okay? Without emotion. But, um, you're, you're very inspiring.
Thank you.
And I think, and you're very humble. That's the word I wanted to use at first.
I'm just very, yeah, as a kindergarten teacher, okay, so we don't like, you know, we do cartoons in front of kids, but we don't, you know, in front of adults, it's always like a freak out.
Okay, so she's trying to say, my, my intern's called Bianca. She would be the opposite.
Oh yeah.
But you're, 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 you're a trailblazer. And the fact that, you know, for those out there, I mean, replays of the show, that's where we get most of our audience, replays of the show. I just want them to understand what you're doing. And at the end of the day, we can't sit down and complain about anything because that's why I started this. Because I started seeing those Housewives shows. Now, if you guys wanna watch it, it's no, I'm not, I'm not disrespecting, I'm just saying, you know? I just got sick and tired of watching these negative shows. And then my interns would call me and say, Miss Jackie, did you watch so and so? And then they would act out in class by throwing things at each other. So for me, I didn't wanna be a complainer because I didn't wanna be a part of the problem, I wanted to create a solution. So I said, you know what? Let's create this show, bam, Women Are Worthy. God has just given me a lot of things. And I'm thankful of the people that support us and continue to support us, especially in the city of Austin. You know, all six Cobb County, all of Cobb County, let me put it out there, okay? If it's my name, I'm gonna be out of breath. So, um, where would you, what is it that Jackie Charles can do for the Board of Education, for your culture? What can we do? Because I wanna make sure when I get, you know, guests on the show and I call them family, I wanna make sure that I am being the best. So I wanna be the best today than I was yesterday. I wanna be better every day. So what is it that we, Women of Worthy Show, can do?
I think you're doing it. I mean, you know, we typically, especially with politics, we think about those big races, right? It's president, governor, um, and just highlighting the fact that the most local of races are the most important, really. It's what affects you the most in your day-to-day and your meaningful lives. And so, um, I mean, this is your platform and you're doing that. And so I thank you for that. Um, but your work with kids, I mean, this is, when I say do something, like for someone, maybe that's it. It's sharing your time and your talents with kids in our community. And we have, um, someone I know who's doing a speaker series at Robbie Elementary, which is one of my schools. And it's just been amazing that they get to hear from, like, state representatives and, uh, people who's been in the military and just all these different people from blocks, different blocks of life that get to talk to them or answer any of their questions. And just exposure, you know, because that, that is something that a lot of our kids, um, may or may not have, right?
Sure.
And so to different kinds of people, different blocks of life, again, and so, um, you know, just be finding your thing. And you serve people.
It, it is because I love to wear clothes and want to wear less corporate America. This is what I wanted to do. I was doing it with the doctors then, but I wanted to do, you know, some about me. But, you know, but I wanted to share my story because I've got a lot and I want women to understand and people to understand, not just women, that your past doesn't dictate your future. You don't, when I tell people my story, they're like, what? You don't have to always wear your scars, you know? I am not my scar. I am beyond that. And I wanna show the kids especially because I, when I was their age, I wish I had someone like me. So that's what I do, you know?
Yeah, I told, um, we get to speak at the high school graduations, which certainly highlight being on the board. It's been really fun. And, um, I told the kids last year, I was like, be kind to each other. That's something we always say as, you know, kindergarten teachers. We teach our kids that. But also be kind to yourself, right? Because things are not so much as planned. Um, things will be really messy sometimes and that's okay. And it's okay to have to change your plan. So just giving yourself permission to, to go through those challenges and come out better on the other side.
Amen. Great that you say that again. And, you know, that's my, you know, cause our, our motto, um, our mission statement is to embrace Bill character within his soul. And that's what we're looking to do with each and everyone that comes on the show. Everyone has a story. We're all the same, just different jobs. We just wanna shine a light on the person because maybe you can help someone out there who maybe is thinking about suicide. Maybe thinking about, well, what am I gonna do with my life? I don't know how to do it. And they may not have a parent in that life. They have, they have a mother and a father, but they may not have a parent, you know? So we're just hoping that we can help. And we're gonna continue doing what we're doing, uh, in the plant-based world, in the cookie world. And, you know, just, just shining a light on everyone that comes on the show. So again, Miss Davis, it's just been a great, and I have to say, let me say this. Camera, come a little closer. Mr. Davis, thank you, okay? Because so often we don't even thank the men in our lives. Mr. Davis, are you listening to me? Come a little closer. Okay? Closer, yes. Thank you for allowing your wife to do what she wants to do. Thank you for supporting her. Thank you for picking up the slack when she's not around and you're helping your beautiful, young, handsome boys. Thank you for when she comes home late, when she's tired, when she don't wanna talk to nobody, when she backs you away. Thank you for supporting me. Cause so often, when it comes to a woman who is rising to the top, we so often put the men in the background when it's a woman. We're always, okay, behind a successful man who's a woman. So I just wanna say, Mr. Davis, I am so, thank you for supporting her. Thank you for allowing her, and I'm gonna use the word allow because I can't, I married her a year, so I don't say it. For allowing her to do what she wants to do. Like she's helping our community and making our county much better. But more importantly, make sure you're taking care of yourself. But just know, we're constantly praising her, praising her. And since she was talking about Beyonce, we probably push you aside and run over to her. So I hope I get the chance to meet you and thank you in person. But I wanna thank you for just really helping her, being her help me and allowing her to do what she's doing. You know, other people are, what do you mean allowing? I'm not talking to you guys, okay? I'm not even doing that. But I just wanna say, I would, I would be remiss in not thanking you.
She's gonna love that.
You know what I'm saying? So I just want you to know that through you, you know, him pushing you and helping you and holding you, you know? So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, we had to get our youngest to basketball practice tonight and then go home, make dinner. I mean, this is just, this is what it takes. There's no, there's no alternative, right? And so that he'd be taken care of and, um, he's been great and he allows me to do, he watches every board meeting. Watches every single one.
That's support.
And it's been a, yeah, huge source of support. And just like, being able to just kind of, you know, just work through this and never let it, you know, overwhelm me, really. So, um, yeah, it's been great. Thank you for, thank you.
No, because I know what it's like, because I know like with my husband, so I know what it's like. I mean, I'm living, doing whatever I wanna do and he's there supporting me. And people are like, he'll be there. And he's like, he's had the, the, the lampshade. No, no. And he's so quiet, you know? So he's like.
They know that they're married.
Right, yeah, exactly. He knew this externness was extra, okay? But I think we have to show your significant other, your spouse, respect. At least unless this is show, this is what we do. So we wanna thank you for being on the show. Can you also tell us, um, how can we get in touch with you, your social media handles? Because we really wanna blow them.
All right. So, yeah, so everything is on the Cobb website in terms of cell phone and email. But it's the cedavisboardmember@cobk12.org. Um, but yes, I'm on Facebook.
Wait a minute.
I know, I'm sorry.
She wrote your name, dude.
Why is that? Second time name.
Yeah.
It is, again, I will put you, I'll send you to the website, the Cobb County website, which is cobk12board. And there's a board link. And then from there, you'll get our information, yes. Um, and you'll see a cell and an email. However, I'm also on Facebook. And so, uh, Sharice Davis for Cobb County Schools. And then there's, um, Davis for Cobb on Instagram, yes.
Davis for the women. She's on Facebook? She's on the ground, y'all. She's on the ground. She's on the ground. Do you have Snapchat?
No.
Okay. Just start a TikTok or Snapchat? They have me on everything. I don't use, I don't do everything. I do my favorite.
I was like, that's very millennial.
My.
Thank you, partner. Or Gen Z.
What are you trying to say? Don't let this fool you. How you know I'm not Gen Z? So I like, uh, yeah, cause my favorite, I love Facebook.
I love Instagram.
Instagram.
Instagram's good. Instagram's feel-good stuff, you know? And I get stressed, um, and then Instagram.
And I'm just at my Facebook. People are really, really good. My followers, they're really good. And I call them my family. They're really good. I don't have any negative stuff because they know, admit it, love, love, delete you. So they're really, and they're very, um, it's diverse. And they're all about love. Cause at the end of the day, everyone wants to be loved and feel loved. So that's what we talk about. So without further ado, we wanna thank Ms. Davis and Mr. Davis. Now, we wanna thank you. And again, you know, you're up for election in twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-two, yes.
Okay. So we'll find out more things that you're doing, getting people involved with what you're doing. And there's this, you said four seats are up?
Four seats are up. So yes, all of the odd numbered, uh, school board posts. So one, three, five, seven.
Okay, one, three, five, seven, they're up for election, reelection and election. So this will be an interesting election in Cobb County. So without further ado, we, oh, by the way, Christopher, don't you dare do that. We wanna remind you to like, subscribe to our Women Are Worthy page on Facebook and Instagram. It's the Women Are Worthy Show on Instagram and Facebook. And our YouTube. We got YouTube. It's the Women Are Worthy Network. So go subscribe to the Women Are Worthy Network on YouTube. Um, the Facebook Live is what we do. And then we have the show edited on second camera. And then that's the edited version that we put on YouTube. So I wanna thank my intern, Christopher, for, for showing up. He's not feeling well and he showed up. And we wanna thank Bailey. She's the editor of the show. And, um, I just, Tori's not here. But we have, I have so many interns who will be here for the things. And I love them. Girl, they're pretty loud. No, honey, ooh, no. But I love them. They're mine. No one else can talk to them like they have to. Not even their parents. But Christopher, he's walking my ass. Never go, knock on the door. But I love you, Christopher. And I love Tori and I love Bailey. So without further ado, we wanna thank you for tuning into the Women Are Worthy Show. It's on every Monday, seven PM Eastern Time on Facebook Live. It's the Women Are Worthy Show on Facebook Live. So it's facebook.com slash, that slash, the Women Are Worthy Show. Don't forget to like our page, subscribe. Bye, guys.